Good evening. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Sarah LaDart to lead us in our invocation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If you'll pray with me, please. Dear Lord, as we enter the holiday season and adjust our family gathering plans, we ask that you grant peace to the more than eighty-seven thousand Georgia families that will be celebrating without a loved one because of COVID-19. Be with our elected officials in Georgia and in Washington, DC, making decisions that affect the lives and futures of our families, communities, and country. We pray that they communicate clearly, truthfully, and calmly, and that their messages are received and heeded. Tonight, we pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. We ask that you would graciously grant them confidence in their knowledge of what is good and fitting. We pray for the agenda set before them this evening. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who choose to make Milton their home. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, November sixteenth, 2020, to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully. And if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, then please bring your comment cards to the clerk as soon as possible. While the Milton rules allow a speaker to turn in their comment cards up until the clerk calls that agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards will be accepted. If our clerk could please call the roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the November sixteenth, 2020, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outburst, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
And joining us via Zoom, Councilmember Rick Morrig.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Ken, good evening, and we welcome you here to City Hall. Okay, Tammy, will you please sound the next item?
The next item is approval of meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number twenty-three-one-two.
Okay, I would like to make a couple of amendments to the agenda. On Agenda Items Number twenty-three-twenty-five through twenty-three-twenty-eight, if we could remove that from new business and put on first presentation, because that should be an ordinance instead of a resolution, and change the text in Agenda Item Number twenty-three-twenty-five through twenty-three-twenty-eight, whereas it reads Associate Judge to Standby Judge. Is there anything else on the agenda staff or council has to change? If not, I'll open up for a motion.
So moved as amended.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, do we have any general public comment?
No general public comments at this time.
Move on to the consent agenda. So if our clerk will please sound the consent agenda items.
The first item is approval of the October fifth, 2020, regular city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number twenty-three-one-three. The second item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and S and M E Inc. for geotechnical services on the Hamby Road Bridge, located at one-four-three-two-seven Hamby Road, Agenda Item Number twenty-three-one-four. Our third item is approval of the audit engagement letter with Malden and Jenkins LLC to audit the city's financial statements for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, 2020, Agenda Item Number twenty-three-one-five. Our fourth item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Ed Castro Landscape for the provision of landscaping services at the city's fire stations and the public safety complex, Agenda Item Number twenty-three-one-six. Our fifth item is approval of an amendment between the City of Milton and the Department of Natural Resources to extend the completion date of the Providence Park Trail Agreement to December 2021, Agenda Item Number twenty-three-one-seven. Our next item is approval of an amendment between the City of Milton and the Department of Natural Resources to extend the completion date of the Providence Park restroom agreement to September the thirtieth, 2021, Agenda Item Number twenty-three-one-eight. Our seventh item is approval of an agreement between the City of Milton and NCRA Payment Solutions LLC for electronic payment processing services that integrates with Just Voya and Civic Rec, Agenda Item Number twenty-three-one-nine. Our next item, our approval of subdivisions, plats, and revisions. Our first development is Chris Gray, Land Lot seven-four-three in District Two, Section Two, the northeast corner of Red Road and Freemanville Road. It's a minor plat. It's subdivided into three tracts at five-point-seven-five-nine acres at zero-point-five-two lots density per acre. Our second development is Dennis Gilreath, Land Lot one-eight-four and one-eight-five, District Two, Section Two, one-six-six-six-zero Phillips Road. It's a minor plat, subdivided into two tracts. Total acres is four-point-six-zero with a density of zero-point-four-three-four lots per acre. Our third and final development is Thompson Manor, Land Lot five-three-eight, District Two, Section Two, at the northeast corner of Little Stone Way and Thompson Road. It's a minor plat subdivided into three tracts. Total acres is five-point-six-seven-seven, and the density is zero-point-five-two-eight lots per acre. Agenda Item Number twenty-three-two-one.
Okay. Open up for a motion and a second. Then agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent items as read.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, the second from Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to our reports and presentations. Tammy, if you'll please sound the first item.
That item is the update on local stormwater issues. Public Works Director, Mr. Robert Drury.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Every year, we have to give... Well, let me back up. I jumped ahead of myself already. We have a stormwater permit, as you know, through the state of Georgia. And in that stormwater permit is a stormwater management plan. Like any other municipality who's bound by the permit, one of the tasks, they call best management practice in the plan, is to provide a presentation to the local government officials on stormwater issues. We do this every year. We're required to do it every year. If you recall, we did it about this time last year. City Engineer gave an excellent presentation on stormwater issues, and I'm going to turn it back over to City Engineer, Mr. Kincaid, in a minute. But I do want to tell you upfront, this is kind of taking it to the next level. I know you all learned a lot from last year and picked up a lot of information, and I think you will this year as well. But this is a little bit more technical. I've asked Ken to kind of back down a little bit. Don't get too technical, because he can if you let him. But it is a little bit more technical than it was last year. But it does provide you a little bit more information. It does give you some insight in order to make decisions as community policy for stormwater. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kincaid, City Engineer, and let him go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Robert. Mayor, Council, good evening. Thank you for inviting me back again this year. So I'm going to make this as, as Robert says, sweet and simple. And so we're going to keep it sweet and simple.
I think the term he's looking for, dumb it down a little.
Well, so we'll start walking through this. So Milton rainfall assessment from 2020 observations. This is Milton City Hall's 2020 rainfall data that we've collected. Actually, I still, we've got two months of data. This is actually the first nine months of this year. So you can see for January, March, we've collected, we had twenty-nine-point-one inches of rain. For April and June, we had fifteen-point-seven. And from July to September, we had eighteen-point-nine inches of rain. The total for the year right now stands at seventy-two-point-nine. The area's average rain in this area is about fifty inches. So what does that mean? That means you guys got a lot of rain this year. That's what that means. So that's quite an increase. And there were some big events, rain events. And we're going to walk through and try to explain what this really does mean. First, I'm going to start out with some famous quotes about rain. We'll like, kind of ease into rain here. Some of you have heard these, red sky at night, shepherd's delight, red sky at night, sailor's delight, Gospel of Matthew that I came from. And that saying is supported by science. When a high-pressure front moves in from the west and drives out the air moisture, the sky will appear red from the shift in the light spectrum, the change between the different densities, and that's what causes it. That's an old saying. We've got another saying here that Milton Public Works kind of adopted. I'm like the rain. I go where I'm needed. And Henry Wadsworth Longfellow, the best thing one can do when it's raining is let it rain. And one of my favorites is Dolly Parton. And what she says, when I see, the way I see it, if you want, the rainbow, you got to put up with the rain. And I think she's right. So here's the basic fundamentals of some of rain. Rain's basically formed by water vapor in the atmosphere, and it stays there until it gets heavy enough. And usually, it gets heavy when it turns to ice or snow, because most rain starts out as ice or snow in the rain cloud. And the actual raindrop shape is not a teardrop. If you see that over there on the side, it actually forms a parachute as it's coming down through the atmosphere. So those are just some basic facts about rain. So here's where we get into our rain data. And engineers and hydrologists use the term what we call a two-year storm event, a five-year storm event, fifty-year storm event, a hundred-year storm event. And what they're talking about when they use that term is an annual exceedance of probability. And I talked to many people, citizens, I have even talked to other engineers and other designers out there. That is not, that return period that we're talking about, that two percent or four percent, doesn't mean we're going to have one storm, a hundred-year storm in a hundred years, or twenty-five-year storm in twenty-five years. It just means annually, we're going to see those type of storms come up four percent of the time or one percent of the time. They could come up many times. That's just the probability of statistics. And so that we use that probability statistics for design, because we want to know, when we design something, we want to know our infrastructure is going to handle or have the capacity for that particular non-exceedance or exceedance of probability. So a little interesting fact, some statistics, I'm not a statistician, but there's a lot of data needed to accurately support the rain exceedance of probability. You can see for a ten-year, twenty-five-year, or a hundred-year storm event, if you want a ten percent error, or less than a ten percent error, plus or minus ten percent level of confidence, you need about a hundred years of data. If you want a twenty-five percent error level, you need about, anywhere from about thirty to fifty years of data. And I would say we've got good technical, high-tech-type rain data in the past fifty to seventy years, a hundred years. We've got rain data, but it probably is not as technical or accurate. So you see, there is air built into the statistics, and some of it can be pretty significant. So when we plot this rain data, what does it look like statistically on a graph? That top graph up there is actually a plot between the rainfall, the amount of rainfall, and a log of the percent probability of exceedance. And so you see all those dots occurring down there from a one-year, two-year, ten-year. Those are, that's what most of the statistics are on those lower events, because we just have more rain events. We have more of those types of rains occurring. And we use that plotted data on a log graph to draw a linear line. Mathematicians, engineers, they all love linear lines, because with that linear line, we can project. And if you look at that projection, there's really no data around a fifty- or a hundred-year event. We're just projecting what that would look like or be. In fact, the bottom graph down there is the actual plotted data. In other words, it's, they're both linear axes. And on that linear axis, you can see the plots, and all the plots happen down there. Most of the plots happen down there below the twenty-year. So we're trying to design, or most of the designs are on that projected line that you see, or that area of the graph, that we really have no data. And we're saying, we're assuming that's what's going to normally happen in a twenty-five or a hundred-year event. All designers design from cause and effect, and stormwater engineers are no different. In my prior life, I did structural engineering, believe it or not, and they do the same thing. They take statistics. They have to worry about wind loads, earthquake loads, and they take that. Those are the causes that could cause their building to fall down. So they would take statistics, basically, many years of collective statistics and design their buildings based on that. Well, stormwater engineers do the same thing. Traffic engineers do the same thing. That's what all their design manuals are. The only time that's different is if we're going to build something or design something, and I'm kind of giving away the trade secrets of engineers here. So I hope I don't surprise anybody or upset the engineering community. But the only time that's really different is if you have an existing structure out there, then you would, you could actually go out in the field and collect data on that existing structure. But in stormwater management, that's difficult to do, because it's very costly. And so when you, and the other thing that happens is you can't really change the drainage basin, wouldn't be able to change at that point. Sarah does that a lot. Sarah Leaders, our traffic engineer, she'll go out and count cars. And what she's doing is she's collecting local statistical data on existing structures. So stormwater engineers do that same thing. So what you see over there is a flood frequency data used for design. And NRCS, SCS, uses that to actually design their dams. They actually take existing basins, and they'll measure the rainfall and then gauge how much runs off. So now they can create their own peak flow curves and collect that data, and then assume that their dam's going to be designed with that, what they call maximum, probable maximum flood. And so they use that data to design their dams with. And we'll talk about that a little bit later. The other method that's used is the rainfall data, which is what we talked about. And those are IDF curves. We're going to talk about those in just a few minutes. So these are the two different methods that are used in stormwater infrastructure. If it's existing, you can sometimes change or modify your structure with collecting your own statistics. But if it's going to be a design, you need to take the all-race statistics out there and use that in your design. So here's an example, and there's downfalls of both of the methods, actually. So here's one of the problems with taking existing measurements on an existing basin. If you had a basin that looked like what it looks like on the left there, and it was like that for eighty years, if Milton looked like that for eighty years, and you had all this flood statistical data. And we do have some actual rain gauges. We have one over here, right off the bridge, off of one-forty, between Cherokee and Fulton. There's a US Geological gauge there. I think there's one on Big Creek. So they actually do have some local gauges around here. And we have eighty years of that, and then all of a sudden, that drainage basin changes, the conditions of it change, which is what you see on the right. That data is no longer valid, because it's just a different type of runoff. You get a much higher flow in those situations. So flood frequency statistics work well as long as your drainage basin doesn't ever change. If that doesn't really happen, we know that doesn't really happen. So that's the difficulty with the flood frequency data. So if we took our City Hall data and we wanted to plot that out, what we would do is we would plot it according to this graph you see up here, and we plot it according to duration and precipitation depth. And the duration is the total time for a given rainfall depth. Frequency is how often this depth occurs in a year. That's the annual exceedance of probability, which we already talked about. And that's why you see the different lines. So if that event occurs four percent of the time, then you're talking about a twenty-five-year storm on that particular graph. And you would follow that storm, or follow that line, twenty-five-year line up there to find out and plot that precipitation depth. So that's the first part. But what design engineers, what we call, use what we call a, sorry, an IDF curve. And these are IDF curves. So this graph we just saw here, you take the time and bite it into your depth. Now we have what we call an apples-to-apples comparison. We have what we added intensity. So that intensity, inches per hour, we use a uniform timeline there. We can compare a storm to a storm now. It's an apple to an apple. So you want to design or collect your data based on the same type of storms. And that's how you do that with these IDF curves. So we take, and so what's intensity? Here's an example of intensity, rainfall. Not so intense on the left, very intense on the right. You've probably heard the expression, it rains on the just and the unjust. You probably grew up with that expression. I like to think that the unjust seal a little bit more intense rainstorms, at least. That's what I see on the right there. I like to hope that anyway. So why is this important to stormwater infrastructure? This is what we really design with, but rain data is the easy component of hydrology. So we're about to shift gears here, and we're going to go a little bit more involved, a little more deeper in what you actually do with this data. Does everybody understand the rainfall data? I'm hoping so. And if I didn't say, stop and ask me questions as I went through some of that. But anyway, the ultimate goal of hydrology is to determine if and when the flooding occurs. Flooding doesn't happen unless stormwater surface runoff occurs. So how is stormwater runoff determined? So this is the part we're going to talk about. It's not just the rain data. This is the tool that stormwater engineers use on a regular basis. It's called a hydrograph. And these hydrographs actually calculate a peak flow for a given basin based on a percent probability. Remember that ten-year, fifty-year, a hundred-year storm? And there's different methods to calculate these hydrographs, but this is what engineers and hydrologists and other designers use to actually come up with a design for stormwater. And we talked about those two different techniques. So these hydrographs can be developed either using rain event frequencies, which is your IDF curves, or they can take it from measured local flows from rain events, which is your US Geological gauges that you see over here on the creek, off of the bridge. You can develop hydrographs that way. So this is the important part of hydrology, is determining what is peak flow. We want to know what's the maximum runoff that's going to occur on a particular basin. So what is a drainage basin? And what are the different variables needed to create a hydrograph? On the left there is a map of the US, and it shows some of the drainage basins just in the US. Well, these are the actual drainage basins. And so you can see the largest one is the Mississippi-Missouri Drainage Basin there in the center. And we've got tons of data on that, but that's a huge basin. On the right is really what we work with. Of course, this is even a little bit too large, too, compared to some designs that come here for two or three acres. But that's the drainage basin. So you can see there's different characteristics of these drainage basins. It's the surface condition, the soil type, the impervious surface. It's the size, the length of runoff, and the slope. All those will contribute to that hydrograph or affect of that hydrograph. Infiltration is a major factor in stormwater runoff evaluation. If you look at that graph or that plot up top here, what you see is a red line or a dark brown line, or you want to call it, and that's the runoff. Runoff doesn't really happen until it exceeds or until infiltration stops, and that's the blue line. So infiltration happens quickly in the beginning of a rainstorm. There's a lot of infiltration. And then it starts, the ground starts saturating, and then that's when the runoff starts to occur or shows up. And so that's, those factors, that infiltration is a major factor in determining when a particular runoff will occur in design. And that first, those factors are surface conditions, impervious surface, and soil types. And you can see down at the bottom, it varies with your forest condition, or residential, or urban. You get ninety to a hundred percent more runoff in an urban area. Forest conditions, you only get about ten to twenty percent. So infiltration's a major factor in when we use design. This is an example, a real-world example. And you can see a road here, and this is actual data that they took off of this road. The top one has curb and gutter on the street, and you can see where the infiltration occurs alongside there. There's no infiltration below the road. And, or even on the sidewalk, which is right to the right. And the bottom one is a road with ditches in it. And you can see there's more infiltration occurring on those ditches. This road's pretty flat, though, so the flatter it is, the more infiltration is going to happen. Steeper it is, obviously, the water won't have as much time to infiltrate. Other factors affecting the peak flows in hydrograph. These are other watershed parameters contributing to peak flow, the size, the slope, and the runoff, which we talked about. But there's this graph, this interesting graph down here at the bottom that I thought I'd point out to Council and the mayor, is if you look at that graph, the very bottom line, it says nineteen forty-one. This is, they actually went out, and this is using the US Geological gauge. They actually measured the flow frequency out there, collected data, and determined what that peak flow would be just by these flow frequencies. They use that statistics. So nineteen forty-one, that's what their actual hydrograph looked like. There was very little, if no peak at all. And then over time, the next one's nineteen fifty-three. Then there's nineteen fifty-nine, and then the present. You can see the hydrograph shifts to the left and the peak increases. And that's due to the development. So they're actually measuring how much it rains and how much is actually running off. And you can see that increase there. If you, in nineteen forty-one, and actually in the nineteen fifties, NRCS was out building a lot of their dams. Milton has eight of these dams. So you can see here if NRCS are, back then it's called SCS, Soil Conservation Services, they would have been designing those dams based on that nineteen forty-one graph, which had very little, if no, peak. And so as time changed, the peak changed. So they do probable, maximum probability to actually design their dams, which we talked about. So they're taking existing data. So now that data, what they originally used for design, is really not valid anymore, because the whole basin is... because the whole basin has changed. So what's the correct hydrological thinking on rain? Our psychiatrists and psychologists say the following is the correct thinking. I'd rather learn to dance in the rain than worry if I have an umbrella for the rest of my life. Now, leaders, public work directors, Robert, say the following is the correct thinking. And this is Warren Buffett, this is a quote from Warren Buffett. Says predicting rain doesn't count, building arcs does. These are the constructed arcs of the past to prepare for rain. These are the constructed arcs of modern times to prepare for rain. On the left side, you see some wet ponds, detention ponds, which actually just hold the water until it has time to dissipate or discharge. There's rain gardens on the left, landscape islands, bio retention across the bottom. And what those do is they just increase that infiltration. Remember, infiltration is a major factor in the runoff. These are some other arcs that are designed for modern times. Up at the top, the left there, you see pervious pavers, they're using those as parking lots, and that's becoming a more common practice. You've got some sidewalks with pervious pavers, even a driveway down there into the house with pervious pavers. And of course, then you have your rain garden down there at the very bottom, and you've got some bio retention on that parking lot. And these are sort of the modern-day ways to help increase the infiltration and the runoff, to reduce the runoff. Milton, remember what Dolly Parton told us about the rainbow? Well, Milton was anticipating a 2021 rainbow this year with less rain, so of course, we've had the rainfall for 2020. That's all I got. Thanks. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, we'll move on to our first presentations. If Emmy will please sound those items.
Our first item is consideration of an ordinance appointing Richard E. Hicks as a standby judge of the municipal court for the city of Milton, Georgia pursuant to Article 5 of the city charter. Agenda item number 2325. Our next item is consideration of an ordinance appointing Barry L. Zimmerman as a standby judge of the municipal court for the city of Milton, Georgia pursuant to Article 5 of the city charter. Agenda item number 2326. Our third item is consideration of an ordinance appointing Keith A. Carnesal as a standby judge of the municipal court for the city of Milton, Georgia pursuant to Article 5 of the city charter. Agenda item number 2327. Our final first presentation item is consideration of an ordinance appointing Jared L. Mitnick as a standby judge of the municipal court for the city of Milton, Georgia pursuant to Article 5 of the city charter. Agenda item number 2328.
Okay, do I have a motion on the first presentation items?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first items as read.
Hey, do I have a second? I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley for approval, and a second for Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Okay, tonight, there are no items under public hearing, so we'll move on to our zoning agenda. If our city clerk will please read the zoning rules and sound the first zoning item.
When the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda, the following rules apply. These zoning items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The opposition will also be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present its position. If time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebuttal. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains within the allotted time. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable, before beginning their presentation. The planning commission has heard the rezoning agenda items, and their recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should have been submitted to the community development department and is included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made, within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributors aggregating $250 or more to a local government. Official of the local government which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the planning commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the planning commission meeting, this city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning item this evening is consideration of zoning text amendment, RZ 20-17, to amend Section 64-395. Uses prohibited in all zoning districts as it relates to temporary consumer fireworks, retail sales facilities. Agenda item number 2306. Ms. Robin McDonald.
Good evening, mayor and council. Sorry, I wasn't prepared for some really incredible quotes to forward or preface this presentation, so.
You can just wing it, Robin.
Okay, well, I'll think about it. So anyway, I have a hard act to follow here. The first item that we have is kind of the tail end of a series of text amendments that you all had heard a couple of months ago regarding fire, consumer fireworks, retail sales facilities. During those text amendments, we had defined what was called a non-structural consumer fireworks retail sales facility, which means a trailer towed by a motor vehicle or tent, canopy or membrane, any thin, flexible or foldable layer of material used to block sun, wind, or water, structure in which consumer fireworks are offered for sale to the public. So we defined that, but we had not advertised for the exclusion of that, which comes under Section 64-395, uses prohibited in all zoning districts. So if you all end up approving this, this will be included in the list of prohibited uses in all zoning districts, called a non-structural consumer fireworks retail sales facility, which is different than in a regular consumer fireworks retail sales facility. So with that, that is the end of my presentation.
Any questions from Robin? Do we have any public comment?
Not on 2306.
Okay. Public here on that, so. Questions, I'll open up for more.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number RZ 20-17.
Second? I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous.
I think, I'm sorry, I read the wrong, I read RZ 20, agenda item 20-306. I just want to make sure that doesn't cause a problem.
We need a re-
Need reconsideration, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we'll have a, we need to rescind that motion or just do a-
Just a motion for reconsideration, then restate the motion.
Okay. All right, I'll open up for a motion for reconsideration of that last item.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for reconsideration.
Okay. Second? We good with that? I have a motion and a second for reconsideration. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Okay, now I'll open up for a motion on this agenda item.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 20-306.
Second? Okay, I have a motion for approval on, yes, 26. Three, from Councilmember Bentley, and a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Thank you.
Our next item is consideration of a zoning text amendment, RZ 20-18, to create a new use permit, Section 64-1845, for farm winery consumption on premises of beer and/or liquor. Agenda item number 2307. Ms. Robin McDonald.
So, good evening again, mayor and city council. Here, we're back again. I just want to review quickly through what we've gone through the last couple of months in this process. So first of all, farm winery in of itself is a permitted use by right within the AG1 zoning district. You all approved some text amendments to Chapter 4 regarding alcoholic beverages to be sold at selling, the selling of just wine at a farm winery. Then council directed our staff with assistance from the economic development manager to propose a new use permit to allow the sale of beer and/or liquor at a farm winery. Staff presented a draft use permit on August 10th work session, and then this draft went before the CZIM meeting on August 25th, where there was no one in attendance, either in person or via Zoom. We presented it to the planning commission and for their input, and then, ooh. Okay. So at the planning commission meeting, basically what happened was the planning commission recommended to not approve a new use permit. It was, I believe it was a vote of four to two not to adopt it. And then we came back to you on October 19th for further direction, and here we are at the final vote tonight. Just in more detail, the majority of members did not support it of the planning commission, and they believed it would be permitting a bar in the agricultural district, and that would be a slippery slope. And then, based on different comments from the planning commission, as well as internal discussions, and your input from October 19th, we've proposed this version of a use permit to allow wine, I mean, to allow beer and/or liquor on a winery, farm winery. So I have in red the changes that I made based on input from the 19th of October. We increased the minimum lot size from five to 10 acres, also requiring the owner of the subject lot to reside on the subject lot. And then, as you go down further to number nine, stated the area where wine, beer, and/or liquor are permitted to be served and consumed shall be identified on the site plan and shall not be allowed outside of the defined area. So everything else is the same as we reviewed back on the 19th of this proposed use permit. So we have that, and that's all I have for this item.
Any questions for Robin on this? Do we have public comment on this item?
We do have one, Ms. Sullivan's here.
Okay.
Ms. Sullivan, you can come up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Mimi Sullivan. My address is 2090 Bethany Way. This, we have only one farm winery right now in Milton, so I'm kind of, my comments are being addressed towards that current facility, current use. So this farm is across the street and one lot over from mine. And it's become very obvious to us over the last couple of months that something's going on over there because it resembles an event space in terms of noise and traffic congestion. We already have a problem, I don't know how many of you are aware, but on Bethany Way, there's a big curve on Bethany Way with straight on either side. We have a real problem there with speed, and we have a lot of accidents in our curve. People will come through that curve at 60 miles an hour. We've had many, many accidents where cars have turned over in the front yards of those of us who live there. We've had several meetings, we've asked for some reduced speed limits, traffic calming measures, none of that has occurred. There's been no, no progress on that being done. And so one of my concerns is the traffic on the road is already deadly, and we have a problem with speeds. And if we add alcohol to that mix from this farm winery right on that road, now they had a special use permit Saturday night for 200 people, which means there were probably 100 cars there, if you count staff and the people working. You're talking about putting a whole lot of cars on that road into the evening, people that may or may not have been consuming alcohol a day on a road we already have a problem with. It's only two-lane, it's right near what's apparently going to be the last and costliest roundabout in Milton at Bethany Bend and Hopewell, and one of their entrances to one of their parking lots is right there at that intersection. So there's already a problem with congestion. It's one of the few east-west cut-throughs. You know, serving alcohol, I feel like, is going to create another danger to our traffic speeding issue. The other problem I have is if this is a farm winery, and they are growing grapes to produce their own wine, and people are coming to see that winery and see that agricultural use of land, I have a hard time understanding why it would be an okay thing to also serve anyone else's wine, anybody's beer, and anybody's alcohol if the focus is on this winery, their product, how they produce it, and so forth. What we're seeing are a lot of big events. They look like weddings, or parties, or we're seeing big tents with lights. One of the bigger problems is the noise. So inside of my house, with my HVAC on, with my television on, I can hear the music good enough to sing along to the songs, and that bass, that beat of that music, it is endless until the music stops. Now, right now, I think they have to stop around 8:00, but I think I saw somewhere in the new use permit or in the proposal that they can go as long as 10:00 at night seven days a week. Seven days a week till 10:00 at night, you've got outdoor music coming. And we are in a horse, horse farm area. We have fields, large lots. This sound carries over those open fields. I'm up on a hill, even in the valleys, I've got a valley between me and the hill behind me, and I think we can talk to each other hill to hill and barely have to yell. So the noise, it's like a music festival over there. It's like an event space over there. One of the concerns I had is that we're labeling a farm winery an agricultural use, but we have a commercial-type use for event spaces and festivals and for landscape, a landscape grower, a landscape use. So maybe if you're growing, actually growing grapes to produce your own wine, that's a landscape use. If you're having events with music and parties and lots of people coming and lots of noise and alcohol served, that seems perilously close to an event for me, an event or a festival. So I'm having a hard time kind of fitting, at least this particular farm winery, into the definition of agricultural use. And I just wonder how much of that 10 acres has to be devoted to the agricultural production or agricultural use of a winery? It might be good to kind of have some limit on that. I mean, is there an acre of grapes? Is there two acres of grapes? The state of Georgia, in their code, states that a farm winery is located on premises of substantial portion of which is used for agricultural purposes, including the cultivation of grapes, berries, or fruits. including the cultivation of grapes, berries, or fruits, to be utilized in the manufacture or production of wine by the winery." Forty percent. It also says it should be owned and operated by persons who are engaged in the production of a substantial portion of the agricultural produce used in its annual production. And some of these questions might be better asked to the state of Georgia, where they have licensed this particular place as a farm winery. But I feel as if, in that 10 acres, there should be some minimum amount that perhaps is actual agricultural production of a farm winery. So, in summary, I oppose this particular use to have alcohol there, both for traffic purposes. I don't know where the noise fits in to that, but the noise is an issue, and certainly the traffic. And, and already on a dangerous road, and nothing has been done to mitigate that up to this point, and now we're adding this, I have real concerns about the traffic. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Okay, is there any other public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Any other questions for Robin on this? Question?
Question or comment?
Okay, well.
Guess I'll start with a comment. You know that we've contemplated this piece of this. Originally, because we had an application before us by the farm winery. And you guys did a good assessment of how it related to a by-right use. Eight parameters are set, you know, which we abide by as well. I think it became confusing when we took consideration pillars of this particular application of this to put forward by the applicant at the time. But I think it's important that when we're measuring this, separate what the experience has been at applicant's height versus what our intent is. Business. And Sullivan makes some very profound points about things for us to consider, most of which have to do with applicants' events and the way they are conducting their business on the site, separate and apart from rate-up consideration of a farm winery. Pose a couple of things for consideration. One is whether or not this part is important for us to do tonight, or whether or not it's separate from the consideration of the application that had been before us, which I understand is still a moving target. I have challenged the applicant's business plan before, when they've been for us. I think it's confusing target, and I think it's service to the city to end what that looks like on the way they're applying their, their, their. I think it's important that we take a hard look at bent-type things that are taking, separate and apart from the actual conducting of the business. Offer that for consideration and look forward.
I do want to ask a question. So, at this point, when we started working on this, there were applications. What there is not, is that correct?
Well, technically, there can't be any application for something that doesn't exist yet, but I think there was interest by the sole farm winery in the city. At this point, we've had, we've been on continuing discussions with, with, with her and her attorney, her land use attorney. And actually, we're going to be meeting again this week. So, we're trying to work through some of those questions that you all have raised to us and concerns that we've received. But as of last week, they've indicated that they, they are not interested in pursuing this use permit if it is approved. Again, obviously, what Councilwoman Moore stated, I mean, we're looking at this as for the entire city, but not necessarily just for one applicant. But it's obviously up to you all what you want to do with it.
Well, that was my, that is my point, that, you know, this is something overall, and there, but we do need to keep in mind, there's not any critical timing at this point. You know, if we need to, we wanted to defer this, or extend it, or, or look at it later. It's, it's not something that is urgent, because there's not, from what Robin's saying, there's not someone looking to bring an application forward, but.
To our knowledge, do, is there, is, are there any other farm wineries that are commercial?
No, there are not registered. I see Sarah back there nodding her head, no. I know I've had some interest, I had some calls from a property owner that, to be honest, they're in a CUP, and they would have to rezone back to AG1 to do a farm winery by right, and so that's, right now, we have none.
Okay. I just have a comment. So, my, my comments are as follows. I have received numerous comments from community members adjacent and on this road, which were in opposition. Couple that with the Planning Commission's decision for denial. I also feel that, since we have just one, and this is new to the city, I think that I would be prepared to deny this. I, I do think it's a disservice to the neighbors to defer endlessly, because they would not know the status of this option. So, that's, that's where I am on this.
Okay. Carol?
Thank you. So, I am not sure what makes me uncomfortable, whether it's the farm winery aspect or the special events, whether those two are necessarily co-joined. Because that's a route I travel quite a bit, and there seems to be a lot of events there with a lot of parked cars. So, I don't know if that is, you know. Does anybody know, or is there a limit to special use permits if there are weddings and things like that? Or it all smushed together, and there's no transparency on it?
So, as was indicated previously, the, the first temporary event, special event permit, we issued this for this past weekend for this event, for a event that was occurring on the property. It's the first time that I've ever, in my memory, issued a permit, which a temp, you know, the administrative permit is allowed twice per year per property. So, that's something that I alluded to, that we're working with the applicant and her attorney to kind of resolve these issues, and try to come to an understanding of what the next steps would be for them. I don't know if the city attorney or anybody wants to, who's, was in that discussion.
I think, Councilmember Cookley, one of your questions is, is can these permits and some of these uses be used? Sort of mushed together, is what you were saying. I think the typical answer is yes. The issue with particularly the property we're talking about, and I know we're having another meeting on Wednesday, is getting to the bottom of exactly what they think they can do on the property, and whether we agree that they can do those things on the property. So, I want to reserve judgment, my own judgment, on that, because we received a fairly robust list of things that they maintain that they can do on the property, and candidly, I'm not sure that I have had a chance to vet that with city staff yet. And I want to be able to do that before I can tell you if I have a comfort level that I agree with what they think they can do.
Okay. Well, I was intrigued, because in my travels, seeing quite a few cars there with full movers, golf carts, and things like that, moving people around, but a lot of parked cars, and then to hear that I haven't had that many special use permits, math, and what exactly, you know. I just, I would appreciate transparency across the board, which I think is fair to the neighbors.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay. Paul?
Robin, I have a question for you. Farm winery definition as provided to us by the state does not contemplate all of the other things that we're experiencing with the applicant today, correct? It entitles them to the farm winery activities, the production of grapes and wine, and maybe even a tasting room. But it does not necessarily include all the other things that we're experiencing on the property that have been discussed to great length. Is that correct?
So, I would defer to Sarah, because I'm not super familiar with the exact definition of the state. I know that we have the definition here at the top, based upon our Chapter 4, so I don't know if it's exactly the same or not, per the state. Or the city attorney wants to speak, whoever.
Fill in the blanks.
Yeah.
So, are you talking about the ability to have events on the property?
My question is, does the state by right, or the state definition of a farm winery, does not include the kinds of things that we're experiencing that a lot of concern has been expressed about? The events, the music, the lots of parked cars, et cetera?
Not that I know of. It does include, so by right, the state does allow beer and liquor consumption on premises. That part the state does allow. I don't think it addresses events.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't exclude them. I am intrigued, I've got it in front of me. You know, it does talk about the, the premises, and then it says, "A substantial portion of which is used for agricultural purposes," clearly written by a lawyer, indecipherable. A substantial portion, so what does that mean? We're going to get to the bottom of that, and I'm, I'm having some fun with it. But, but I, I know that means more than just a nominal use.
Yep. Yeah, where the predominant event, or prominent use appears to be something other than a farm winery.
That's right.
There's an under, underlying farm winery, but there really is an event facility.
Exactly.
So, having, having heard that, with the benefit of that from Robin and from Sarah, I, I would go down the path of, because the alcohol portion of that is different from, for the city of Milton than from the state, I'd like to say, if the, if the council were to choose to go forward this evening, I would be hard-pressed to support the alcohol portion, the beer and liquor, the beer and spirits portion, because that is different than we've ever allowed in Milton before. And I would support the Planning Commission's recommendation of that for the reasons of the great length that they went to vet it. If we were not going to go forward with that, I think there is some value to pausing, because I know that in their consideration, it's been heavy-handed with the consideration of the applicant, separate from maybe a clear assessment of it, if it were not with the applicant's considerations. So, I think we've, you know, we've clouded it. The applicant, at this point, is truly separating some of those. Might be best served to simply pause. Offer that for consideration.
Yeah, I mentioned that earlier. Laura?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I remember this correctly, because we did come back, Sarah, and we allowed the sale of out-of-state wine for this particular winery, also, in addition to.
Correct. The initial rewrite of Chapter 4, we said they could only sell their wines and other wines made in Georgia. That was the initial approval of the entire ordinance. And then we came back and revised that, that they could have any wine they wanted from anywhere, they could sell on the premises.
Okay. You want to go?
Yeah, I certainly understand everybody's concern and citizens' concerns related to this. I just want to point out, we've spent a lot of time talking about this up to this point. And the text amendment, the way it's written, was our suggestion as, as a group. And so, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, I'm not saying it's a good thing, but we made those decisions based on a lot of information that was being shared, a lot of detail related to what makes a venue like this successful. And so, I don't want to lose track of the fact that some of this was well-founded on the information that had been shared at that point in time. But I support delaying this decision or, or putting this off until a better date.
I just add one thing.
And then, go ahead, Carol, then Paige.
Go ahead, dear.
I'm, I'm great.
So, I understand that in good comments, however, I don't think it appeared to me that big events plus farm winery plus horse operation. I thought we were farm winery, event venue, then that's, I, I'm with you. Pause button, I understand.
I was going to say just exactly what Carol said, let's just, I know the applicant really isn't applying for this now, is what they said. At that point, so. Paul?
Another question for Robin. Robin, are, is staff better served to have an underlying ordinance in place for farm wineries at this point? Even if we choose to pause on all the other? Or are you equally well-served at this point for us to pause?
I mean, I think my opinion would be, if you wanted to require a use permit for, you're saying a farm winery that's just serving wine of their own, or what's permitted thus far, without...
Without the text amendment.
Right, without the beer or liquor.
Are you served efficiently, sufficiently, by the, the ordinance prior to the text amendment? To facilitate, to facilitate a farm winery in Milton?
I mean, I think that's a policy decision, that's not up to me. I think that obviously, this farm winery, and we can talk to the city attorney, would be grandfathered it, and therefore, they wouldn't, an existing one, I don't think would have to meet all of these requirements, because we allowed it as a use, a permitted use. So, I would let the city attorney address that. So, again, it's a policy issue, whether you feel like, in the future, you want future farm wineries to go through a use permit, even if they're not selling beer or liquor. And then, what would happen with the existing one?
Well, it's interesting you're talking about that. I mean, having existing use before we begin to regulate it, you, we all know how that. I think there is already discussion, but I would sort of bifurcate the issues. The reality is, what I heard is that the single farm winery, that I think at least I know we have, that I was at least in some of this, is not in a hurry to pull down this permit. And so, therefore, I don't, from my perspective, I don't see any legal.
And I will. Okay, Ken, question for you. As I've, I've heard both a delay, a pause, on the shelf, so to speak, and an outright denial. What would the process be for a play or tabled or?
That's right. So, it depends what the, what the objective of the council is. If it's truly to, to delay and have something else brought back, because this isn't what you wanted, that's, that looks like one thing to me. That would be some direction to staff, with perhaps a date certain, put on a future agenda. Or if it's truly, let's just take a timeout, you could withdraw the agenda item altogether, or you could table it. And of course, remember, procedurally, from a parliamentary procedure standpoint, if you table it, there have to be basically two meetings to bring it back. One meeting where you remove it from the table, and then it comes back to the next succeeding meeting. So, I would be comfortable with either or any of those, Mr. Mayor. To me, the, the, the trigger, though, is, is direction or no direction. If there's really not any direction, then it seems to me either a table or withdrawal would be the right play. If there's direction, then I think it helps staff to know what their, what their objective data, that their date is to bring it back.
Comments on that, question?
I'd say withdrawal was the best option, because it gives us more flexibility.
Yeah. That, should we agree with that, Ken?
Mr. Mayor, that's fine, because this is a city-initiated co-change. It can be brought back whenever the staff or the council want it brought back.
I just have a comment at this point. After thinking a long time about introducing beer and liquor into our AG1 areas, I'm, I'm not going to have any additional direction on this. So, just for the record, I want to state that... So just for the record, I want to state that there's really no change or improvement that I can foresee that would have me supporting this, so...
All right, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to withdraw Agenda Item Number 20-307.
Second. I have a motion for withdrawal, Councilmember Jameson, with a second from Councilmember Longoria. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that would be six support, and Councilmember Bentley in... Encussed. Okay. Tammy, will you please sound the next zoning item?
The next item is consideration of zoning amendment, RZ 20-20 in Section 64-1121, within the rural Milton overlay as it relates to a farm winery. Agenda Item Number 2308.
Okay, so this next item, RZ 2019, is a use permit, or a use table that comes out of the rural Milton overlay district. It's associated with farm wineries, but with that said, there was a tweak that we needed to make, so even though you're withdrawing the farm winery's consumption on premises of beer and liquor, we don't need it for that, but I would like you to consider adding farm wineries under the agricultural type uses, just to make this table complete, since that's more of a recent type use. So with that said, I would recommend approval, RZ 2019, with an amendment just to add farm wineries to agricultural type uses, and not to include farm winery's consumption on premises. With... I don't know if this... It's not up. It's coming up. So you'll have it in front of you in a second there. So that second column is agricultural type uses. So basically, what we do, we subdivide in the rural Milton overlay different types of uses, and depending on what the uses are, and there's another page, there's some more items before this, but I just put this one on. We look at things like buffers, parking, location, just general things, but in our agricultural type uses, we really want to make it as simple as possible. So that's why we want to put this farm winery, just the farm winery that's allowed by right, you see the asterisk, and then on the bottom right, it says, "allowed by right within the zoning district." So I would request that you approve this table with an amendment to add farm wineries only.
Strike the...
Strike the other?
Right, to strike the second one.
The one without the asterisk.
Correct.
Do we have any public comment on this?
We do. Ms. Sullivan has a comment on this.
Okay.
Here I am again. Amy Sullivan, 2090, Bethany Way. Y'all may get tired of hearing from me tonight. I guess an agricultural use is as simple as possible, but it makes it as simple as possible to put that tent right up along the road at the front of the street, with all the lights and all the chairs and tables inside of it, and the music nearby. And so that's one of my concerns. My other concern is that all of this is happening during a pandemic. This whole issue has been unleashed during this time, when very few people are paying any attention to what's going on. And that concerns me, that we're not getting more input. And part of the reason I feel that we're not getting more input from the neighborhood is because we're all looking for signs. We're all looking for that yellow sign out there in front of that place. What is going on? We're calling each other, saying, "What is going on?" And there's no notice to us. We've received nothing in the mail to tell us. We've received no signs in front of the property to say, "This is what's going on. This is what's being considered. You may want to find out what's going on in here." There's been, you know, a small line mentioned in an agenda meeting that I think a lot of us aren't paying attention to, because we're more concerned with our jobs and our children and school and everything else going on. So one of my questions, and I don't necessarily expect y'all to be able to answer this tonight, but so if we withdraw this, and we table this, and this doesn't happen, does that mean she has to stop doing what she's doing? This has been going on now for months. Does that mean the music is going to stop? And the music goes on at least three nights a week, three nights a week. Does that mean that we're going to stop seeing all the police cars in the road blocking traffic, cars lined up back to the curb, so that someone coming down from Haygood and around the curb can't see those stopped cars till they get around that curb? Does that mean that this will go quiet again? That our neighborhood will go quiet again? Because right now, we have got a commercial use in the middle of a residential area. I can only address this one farm winery, because that's all I have. But it feels like we should define what we think a farm winery should be doing in Milton, before we make approval on any kind of amendments about it. I mean, what is our definition of farm winery? There's been a lot of conversation about that tonight, and it seems to not be clear. If you look at the 69 pictures that are on the website for this farm winery, seven of 69 show anything to do with wine. Two are with grapes. One is with seedlings, one foot tall seedlings planted. Another looks like an established mature winery, vineyard, and I wonder if that picture was even taken at that property. But all the other 62 pictures show festivals, events, parties, you know, tables lined up in the woods with lights and trees. So I feel like the focus of this farm winery is not the production of wine, and highlighting their wine. And one of my other concerns is that, let's see, no signs. Oh, you know, it's a nice idea to say, "We're going to have one site on the property. This is the only place that you can have alcohol. You can't walk around with a glass. You can't have it out here in the woods at the table, or over here." Who's monitoring that? Who's going to go onsite every night to these events and see where someone is drinking this alcohol? That might be something you're proposing that's very hard to monitor. And so, you know, I'm not sure that's necessarily a solution, if it's going to be, unless you have an enforcement officer that's going to be at every event there, that's checking that out. Those are pretty much all my thoughts. I appreciate y'all's attention so much, and it's nice to know that y'all are being so thoughtful about this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Any other public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and then bring back questions for Robin, or Ken, or any other staff members.
I have a question. So, Robin, the change to the chart, that includes not the prior text amendment details, the ten acres?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, it's just updating the chart?
Right.
For farm wineries?
To comply with the develop... There's only like four or five development standards that are under...
Okay. So in that definition of farm wineries, would this, the ability to sell that we granted out-of-state wine be included in that definition of farm winery? Because we decided that a while ago.
I mean, I'm just looking at from whatever the farm winery was permitted to do yesterday or before, they're still allowed to do that today, if you approve. It doesn't really make any impact on what they can or can't do. It's whatever is permitted through the alcohol license and the state, that's all that means, is a farm winery.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I have another question, sorry. I'm trying to figure out how to ask the question. Robin, if the, if I remember correctly, at one point in our discussion, not this evening, prior discussion about this, when it was, when there was some concern expressed about setbacks for, offers for the farm winery, remind me, if it's traditional agricultural use, adjacent to AG1 residential use, what is the setback requirement?
So under this category of agricultural type uses, you only have to comply with the standard AG1 setback. So I mean, if you're growing grapevines, you could do it right at the property line. But the, any kind of buildings that would be on it at this point in time would just have to comply with the AG1 setbacks, as well as there's, under this category, there's no buffers. Like traditionally, if you had a church adjacent to a residential, we would require 75 feet for more than four acres. So none of those buffers are within this category of agricultural type uses.
So in assessing the current operation that's there, part of it, basically zero setbacks, if I heard you. And then for like the agrarian part of it, the growing of the grapes, growing, harvesting, whatever, and whatever, if it's unmanually, even with machinery, that can be done pretty much at the property line without restriction.
Correct.
And in your assessment of what the structures are on the site, are those compliant with appropriate setbacks? Are there any considerations that would need?
I would have to look at the site plan. I don't have it right in front of me. I can't give you an exact answer.
If we were to not include that this evening, the questions you've made for that to be placed into the chart, again, because we're providing other consideration for farm wineries, does that pose any issue for staff right now, if we were to delay on that as well, until we better understood what our definition of a farm winery is?
That would be up to you all. I mean, if, I would see if I could go back and look at what the situation of our only farm winery is, what kind of position they would be, and I can...
The reason I ask, I have mixed feelings about it, because of the important statement that you made, which I would need to weigh in. The fact that there has been this ongoing use, there's a certain, because it's been allowed for a period of time, and the applicant feels like there are some things that they are entitled to, whether or not we take this action tonight or not, it really would have less impact on that one because of the fact that they've been doing it that way for a period of time. Are we actually providing more protection for staff by putting it in the table today, rather than delaying?
That's a mixed question, Councilmember. I mean, the reality is, we do recognize something in Milton called a farm winery. It's in our code.
Right.
It's in the state law, and our code simply says, under the definition of what is a farm winery? It's a farm winery that's considered a farm winery by the state. So I don't know that whether we make what I would almost consider to be a housekeeping table amendment tonight moves my needle one way or the other, as to whether this one business we're all sort of talking about derives any benefit or detriment from it. So I could, from a legal perspective, I could go either way, truly.
And the comfort I was looking for was recognizing that there are certain things that we are forced to address because of what we're already dealing with, versus the opportunity to give staff something that they need, to your point with housekeeping going forward. I mean, I'm inclined to lean toward giving staff the benefit of the housekeeping correction, and if it doesn't provide us any detriment or any unsure footing with the other application part of it, I'm inclined to go forward with the housekeeping.
I understand. That makes sense.
Okay. Laura?
Just a comment on farm wineries. I know we've only identified one commercial one, but we do have others in the city.
Correct. I guess that is true, that there's somebody in Sunnybrook Farms that has, that is pretty extensive winery as far as growing grapes, but he doesn't, as far as I know, open it up for the public, it's just for his own hobby. So, yeah.
So with that, I would just say, I obviously support farm wineries, and this seems to be a housekeeping item that we need to just go ahead and allow, in my opinion. You know, again, the text amendment is different. You know, that's a deeper and more, you know, serious matter with what we allow, so, unless I'm understanding this the right way.
And I mean, I'm not sure that even what the gentleman in Sunnybrook Farms says, I don't know what he does with his grapes. I don't know if he produces wine to be sold. So I'm not even sure if, you know, that is considered a farm winery, or he's just doing agricultural, you know, propagation of grapevines and then collecting it. I mean, I'm not sure what makes ultimately a farm winery. I do know that he grows grapes, so...
Well, and it's, I mean, it's an ag use, and this is what we want in Milton, so I in no way want to, you know, swelch that. I just wanted to, you know, the additional uses with the farm winery are my issues, so...
Okay. What else? Go.
Robin, so there've been a couple of comments tonight about things that are actually taking place on some of the properties that are known to be farm wineries. We don't have any unconforming activity taking place, do we? We don't have an enforcement problem, do we?
Well, I think that's what we're in discussions with the property owner and her attorney, to try to figure out, you know, what the city attorney...
Yeah, would that be better answered by Ken?
Yeah, I mean, it's a work in progress, Councilmember Longoria. We're still looking at this. Like I say, we got presented with a laundry list of uses that this property owner believes they have been doing for decades, and their position is, therefore, they have the right to continue doing it. I think staff was going to go do some research to see what their, not only what maybe their notes reflected, but also maybe what some of the previous codes from Fulton County would have authorized, and some of the, maybe the permits that they might have been issued. But that's a work in progress. So your question's a good one, as with Councilmember Morse, I'm not sure I can answer it yet.
Right. No, I guess my point is, and one of our citizens asked the question, does us taking action, or us not taking action, stop any of the behavior that we're observing right now on the property? And question, and answer to that question is no. What's happening today is going to be happening tomorrow. What we do tonight is not going to impact that.
That's my position. I mean, the uses that I saw, that, I'm not saying I'm even troubled by them, I just want no more information. We're not about a farm winery.
Right, exactly. Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. If not, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 20-308.
Second.
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from...
Can we, yeah, I want to clarify exactly what you want to approve on that.
The presentation has the... Asterisk, yeah. Asterisk versus not asterisk. Spiking the one part of the... So do you want to clarify as...
Yeah, as presented by...
Well, I would like, it would be more clear that you just say, "I make a motion to approve ours, the item, just with the addition of farm wineries under agricultural type uses." So it'll be very clear exactly what you all, if that's what you're going to propose.
Okay. All right, Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to my motion.
All right, I think, she can go ahead and make a new motion, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 20-308, specific to farm wineries. Current farm wineries?
No, just say, you just say, "Only to allow, only to include farm wineries under agricultural type uses."
Only to include farm wineries under agricultural uses.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion as read from Councilmember Bentley, with a second from Councilmember Cookerly. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's unanimous. Tammy, if you'll please sound the third and final zoning item.
That was the, we're moving on to unfinished. That was the third.
All right, we're moving to unfinished business. So if you would sound...
Absolutely. Consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter Four, Section 85, Farm Wineries of the Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia. Agenda... Agenda Item Number 20-309, Ms. Sarah Ladart.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I believe since Council chose to table the earlier agenda item, that this one should be tabled as well?
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn, sorry. It's to add the beer and liquor consumption on premises as licensed uses, or licenses issued to the farm winery section in alcohol, Chapter 4, so it's no longer necessary.
Tammy, do we have any public comment on this?
No, we do not. No, we do not.
Okay. I'll close that hearing and open up for a motion, or just if there's any questions or discussion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw Agenda Item Number 20-309.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Jamison for withdrawal of this item, and a second from Councilmember Moore. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. That's six in approval, and Councilmember Bentley in opposed for the record.
Thank you.
And I just want to make a, just a general comment. I know we had public comment on this, and, you know, per our rules, public comment is a time for us to hear from, from citizens, and not a back-and-forth and answer questions. But for any of those that spoke publicly tonight, feel, please feel free to, after the meeting, reach out to any one of us or our staff members, or email, we'd be glad to phone call and answer any questions we can on the ongoing situation there and whatnot. Okay. If you'll please read the final unfinished business item.
Second item is Consideration of an Ordinance Revision to Chapter 46, Article 2, Section 46-24, Prohibitions of, Prohibitions of Public and Private Littering. Agenda Item Number 20-310, Mr. Robert Drury.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, again. What you have before you is a revision to the county's municipal code for private property. This came about, actually, initiated by Georgia EPD's audit of our stormwater permit. They've actually told us that we need to adopt the model state ordinance for littering on private and public property. So, the ordinance in front of you is basically the state's model ordinance. I would like to add, just for clarification, that since the first reading, we did have to add a paragraph to the code to include construction sites and construction site operators keeping their waste on site. Otherwise, this is a model ordinance, and legal has approved it. Available for any questions.
Any questions on that? Now, I'll open up for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. Will you approve Item Number 20-308?
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Cookerly with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
That's unanimous. Let's move on to new business. Tammy, if you'll please sound the first item.
Consideration of the issuance of beverage license to Law &amp; More Nails and Beyond Salon, 850 Mayfield Road, Suite 101B, Milton, Georgia 3009. Agenda Item Number 20-322. Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening, we have an application for an incidental license. Just wanted to give you a little background on what that is. An incidental is for an establishment that does not serve any food. They also cannot charge for the alcohol. This is where they're just offering alcohol, either beer or wine. You cannot have any distilled spirits. There are limits to the amounts that can be served. They cannot exceed 16 ounces of wine or 24 ounces of beer within a calendar day to the individual. There's also restrictions on how much money they can spend on the alcohol as opposed to their total gross receipts. It's at 2%. And there are limited hours, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So, this would be for Law &amp; More Nails and Beyond Salon, right here in downtown Crabapple. They have met all the requirements, and staff recommends approval.
Is there any public comment on this?
There's not.
Close the public hearing. Any questions? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 20-322.
Second. I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Jamison. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. If, and ask our city clerk to please call the next item.
Second item is Consideration of the Issuance of a Conditional Alcohol Beverage License to Milton Tavern LLC at 13800 Georgia Highway 9, Suite 3031 in Milton. Agenda Item Number 20-323, Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Milton Tavern is over off of Bethany Bendon Highway 9. They are looking to complete construction of their renovations. During that renovation process, we now have an option for them to have a conditional license. This will give them the ability to get their state license and everything in order so they can open up on day one serving their alcohol. They did meet all the requirements, and staff recommends approval.
Hey, is there any public comment on this?
There is none.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Is there any questions? If not, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 20-322.
Second. Okay. I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley, I believe, as Councilmember Moore with a second, with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Our third item is Consideration of the Issuance of a resi, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry, of alcohol beverage caterer license to Q BBQ at 13700 Georgia Highway 9 North in Milton. Agenda Item Number 20-324, Ms. Bernadette Harville.
All right. Q BBQ, also off Highway 9, is looking to add a resident alcoholic beverage caterer license. This allows Q to go to private events or special events and serve the alcohol that they are licensed to serve within their establishment, so in this case, it would be wine and malt beverages. They do have to submit a subsequent permit request to our city manager for approval for each event, so we would be notified before the event that they'd be doing that. This is a license fee to allow them to have the license to do those events. They're in compliance, and staff recommends approval.
Hey, any public comment, Tammy?
There are none.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and open up for comments, questions, or motion.
Question? Bernadette, just to clarify, so, I asked your, to, I want to host a private party in my home, and I want a caterer. I also want them to serve pure wine and spirits. Q would apply, or the, if I were needing a permit for my event, if I was hosting a wedding, I guess, in my backyard would be a better example, correct?
Yes, sir. So, there's a couple of different distinctions here. If the event is still deemed a special event, that location would still need to get their special event approvals through zoning and all of that. If it's a small private event that would not require that, Q would still need to come in and get their permit for that event to serve, and then they would have to, in this case, they don't do distilled spirits, but any resident caterer doing distilled spirits would have remit their excise taxes and things like that.
Okay. And then, thinking about the event that took place this last weekend, the farm winery, would Q have required, they were, they were actually one of the providers of the food in. I don't know whether they did alcohol or not. But as, using that as the example, they would have had to have pursued the permit to sell the spirits at that event.
That is correct. They're under a temporary currently while this is under advisement for you to approve or disapprove, and they do have to tell us about each event, and then those events are authorized.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? I'll open up for motion.
Here I have Agenda Item Number 20-32.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Moore with a approval, with a second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right.
Our final item is Consideration of a Professional Services Agreement between the City of Milton and Charles Abbott Associates, Inc., for Building Plan Review and Inspection Services. Agenda Item Number 20-300, Mr. Robert Bishimi.
Mayor, Council, good evening. The city's current contract for building, plan, review, and inspection services is coming to an end. Milton remains committed to customer satisfaction, has gone through an openly competitive request for proposal, RFP, process, in order to select a firm to provide these technical services at the most efficient rate. The RFP was advertised in June of this year, and five responses were received. The responses were assessed by an internal evaluation committee comprised of staff from community development and public works, resulting in the selection of this proposal. And it's the proposal before you tonight from Charles Abbott and Associates.
Okay. Is there any questions? I do want to, I've also had some discussions with the city manager and some of you, and in the past, we have asked to look at some other options moving forward for the future. And I would like to see us pursue a little bit, give staff a little bit more time to look at those before we enter into a long-term contract. You know, if, if there's a possibility that we could, could, kind of, extension or, or whatnot, and give us a little bit of time to look at that.
We'll have to bring you back a, and obviously, a contract amendment, but again, I am comfortable that that is perfectly in order.
What else? Questions or comments?
So, can you clarify what a contract amendment is?
Right. So, there's going to be an existing contract right now we have, I believe, with our current provider, which is SafeBilt, and if we want simply to allow additional time to look at bringing this function in-house, or some other option, I would simply work with their attorney or whoever the peer is on the other side, and get an extension of their existing contract for some period of time between, I was thinking, three and six months, but I'll take my cue from the city manager.
Thank you.
And, and just for purposes of the procedure, and again, I don't want to forecast what the council's going to do this evening, but if it is, in fact, you're not prepared to enter a contract with the RFP recommendation, then rejection of all the proposals is fully consistent with your purchasing policies. I would only ask that if that's the motion that's going to be made, that you simply, that is perceived to be...
Okay. And I, I just want to make a statement that, you know, this has no reflection on Charles Abbott, or, and, you know, SafeBilt, no, no negative reflection or whatever on either, either firms, but just, you know, based on discussions and whatnot and options, we want to just look at this a little bit harder, so that, that would be my recommendation. And, and Ken, Steve, you said we could do an extension for six months on the legal side, and then, then make our decisions there. So, I don't know if, you know, if anybody else has any other thoughts, or went a different direction, I'm fine with that, too, to listen to.
Mayor, I just, in case I wasn't clear, I don't want to do the extension tonight. That, that is going to be a separate item.
So, what we would need to do tonight, if everybody's in agreement with that, would just reject...
So, what's the language for the most?
We would reject the, at this point of the, the applications or the contracts?
Well, here's what I'd recommend. I think the first thing we have to do is we need to, to reject all of the proposals because that is in the best interest of the city of Milton, and then direct staff to work with SafeBilt to bring back a six, a six-month amendment to the existing contract.
Okay.
Ken, the only thing I was thinking, just because that's going to require a special called meeting, this is going to be a difficult time to get that done, because I'm going to have to get that done before the 30th. Is there any way that a motion could be made that could authorize us to enter into a contract up to six months without having to reassemble the council?
The, the, the problem I've got is, is that's, that's really not on the agenda. Is, a contract amendment is not on the agenda. It's a fair point, and that's probably, in any place other than government, that would be the way you do it, but we're so regimented with respect to our agendas, I think that the better play is to, to reject the proposals that have been tendered, and then authorize the return of that contract amendment.
And then, I guess, so Steve, what you're saying, we'd need a special called meeting at, before, what's the date?
By the end of the month. I'll turn, turn this around as quickly as I can.
And I just, and again, I'm just asking, it, it, Ken, is there any, may not be, but a way that, I would, this could be confirmed at the first, next meeting?
That's what I was going to say. I would recommend we simply just have discussions with SafeBilt, work out the terms of the contract, understand that, that, that ratification will occur at the first meeting.
Maybe a few-day window there.
I, I don't have any problem with that at all.
Joe?
It's better for us to reject the work that's been done already as opposed to just withdraw this item from, from discussion tonight?
Well, the purchasing policies give you a couple of options with respect to an RFP process. I'm simply looking at the language in your purchasing policies. You, you can either approve it, you can disqualify, or you can reject the proposals. I think rejection is probably what needs to occur here. Clearly not going to accept it is, is the tenor I'm hearing from the council.
Well, I guess I see Joe's point. Can you table the, you know, I think what would happen, you know, after this period, the decision would be made to, for lack of a better term, put it back out for proposals for the, and the same...
Right.
Proposed, proposed companies can propose on them, but...
It's, it's challenging, though, in a, in a solicitation process to table. Proposals get stale, dollar amounts get stale, circumstances change.
That's right. And I would say this, I know there's been a lot of work on, you know, some companies that have done this, but, maybe I'm wrong, but they probably could just update their proposal, just with...
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
New dates and new dollars, or if that, if anything changes, it's not like starting from scratch, so...
But to Joe's point, when, like, my company makes a proposal together in response to an RFP, proposal has an expiration date. Oftentimes, it's 30 or 60 days, accepted or rejected.
Right.
Not accepted by the hiring party, our obligation to honor the price point, for example. So, if we haven't accomplished what you're after in 30 or 60 days, it's entirely possible, and if the RFP response is included language like that, comes moot because they would, we would have gone beyond the expiration date of their RFP offer.
Right. I mean, I, I do these from time to time as well. My private law firm does RFPs. I'm used to, they're, and some, it's not terribly uncommon for there not to be an award, particularly with an RFP even different than a bid, because an RFP is actually where you're asking the vendor, tell us your proposal for achieving this, or, you know, solving this problem. So, it's not quite as regimented as a bid, but, and, and by design, has a lot more flexibility put into it. There are some things, depending upon where the council wants to go, we're going to need to look at with respect to some of your other codes that are implicated in this one, that may also lend itself to just a rejection on this one. If you all want to fire this back up in the future, and you really don't change the, the proposal specs much, then these entities could just resubmit what they submitted the first time, maybe with some clarifications. But I do think your code anticipates sort of a line in the sand, whether an approval or a rejection. Again, it's not rejection in a pernicious way, it's simply just the end of the process. That's all I'm talking about.
I have a question. So, given the fact that, that we have latitude as a council, elementary here, Ken, but why can we not track this company through no fault of this company other than perhaps in-house and at the same time, latitude for staff or agreement with number? Why can't we wrap those two together? I mean, if we have latitude not to choose the company, then we just don't choose this one?
Yeah. So, I, I think we're going to do everything you just said almost exactly like that, except I am going to make you come back and ratify it in December. That's more me, and me trying to keep a, a close look on your agendas.
We're going to do it in a regular council meeting.
But, yeah, at a regular council, yes, it's going to be the same effect, yes.
That's fine.
So we, we can do that in a regular council.
Yeah, alright.
Your point's well taken, and I'm going to, I think, city manager is going to have the ability to negotiate it, get it done, put it to bed, maybe even have the mayor sign it, but I'm still going to want to come it back. It's just more transparent to have it back in front of this council at a meeting on a published agenda.
Okay, then I think I just repeated what you, sorry about that.
No, no, that's, no worries at all, that's.
Alright.
We, Tim, do we have any public comment on this?
I do not, I'm just double checking Zoom. No, I do not see any hand raised, we don't have any.
Okay, then we'll, we'll, I'll close the public hearing part of this, and is there any questions or?
I'll be happy to make one if somebody gives me the language.
The key, Councilmember Cookerly, that I was looking for was that you're going to reject all the proposals, and that is in the best interest of the city, and then authorize staff to work with SafeBilt for up to a six-month extension of the existing agreement, and to bring that back to the first regular meeting in, in December.
I'll pass that through if you want to.
Okay. Alright. Mayor, I propose, I make a motion that we reject all the proposals. Special services agreement. Because it's in the best interest of the city, your term, direct staff, first six-month engagement with SafeBilt, bring this back before this council in.
December.
December, August, I don't know. Okay, sorry, that was weird. And that's number 20 dash 3.
Okay.
Second.
All right, I have a motion as read by Councilmember Cookerly. And with a second by Councilmember Moore. Are there any discussion? Rick, are you there?
I am here.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes unanimously then. All right, I will open up to reports. Is there anything that council wants to report on? Not, I'll open up to staff reports, starting with our police.
Greetings, Mayor, members of council. Happy to report as we head towards the end of the year, we're showing significant reductions in crashes. A lot of that is a bit artificial due to COVID and the lower volume of traffic around our city, but we're down 36% overall, and that includes 37% down in personal injury crashes, so, good news there. We're 14% down in overall reported crime, including 16% down in persons crimes, and then 13% down against, crimes against person, I'm sorry, crimes against property crimes, and crimes against society, we're down 22%. Been pretty active out in the community, trying to be, be a bit innovative to try to find some things that we can do to, to remain engaged with the community. One thing that we did, was very well received, was a drive-through trunk retreat. We did that the week before Halloween, and we, we had cars lined up all the way up school, drive out to Highway 9, we had to get some traffic direction, and we had to make another candy run in the middle, so, very well received. So we appreciate everyone coming out for that. We gave away a lot of safety bags, we gave away junior police badges and stickers, and just really had a, a good time doing that. Also, we had another successful DEA drug take-back. Our, this initiative gets prescription drugs out of circulation, so we took back quite a bit there and turned those over to the GBI to be destroyed. And then lastly, last week, we had a Facebook Live presentation. We've had over 1,000 views of that, so we covered a lot of material there, and have had some, some very good feedback from the community on that. And that's all I have this evening.
All right, I'll just, a little bit ago, I just, I forwarded to chief and city manager a compliment from a local resident and business owner that had an issue with a truck and a trailer and all that, and just complimenting our, our officers on not only helping them through the situation, but blocking traffic and keeping everybody safe. That's on the good thing.
All right, thank you for passing that along, we'll ensure that officer gets recognized for that good work.
Wasn't sure his name, but said he had gray hair, so that, I knew it cut.
It's not me. We'll track him down. Thank you.
The next, Bob?
Mayor, Council, following the chief is not easy, after working, after working with him every day for the last year. So what we're going to do a little tonight is, thanks. I wanted to just give you, at each one of these, maybe a little brief overview, a visual overview of things that are going on, projects that you've approved in the past, and how they're developing, where they are in the process, and what they look like. I think it's important to see sort of what things are, are looking like and how they're developing, so that it kind of helps when you make future decisions to say, okay, how does this look? So this one here is at Birmingham Corners. There were a lot of conditions of approvals, several pages even of architectural approvals, conditions that went on there. So this is, if you look at the, the diagram on the upper left, it kind of shows the first grouping of houses that are going in, and this is the grouping in the order that it's going to see. And we're working with the applicant and his architect to come up with the designs that would be in character of the corners and meet all those conditions. So I kind of wanted to show the council what this is sort of looking like before we give it a final blessing and approval.
Bob, is that the orientation to Birmingham Highway that we're looking at on the bottom?
It is. Yep, it's the, if you see it, the, so the fronts would be facing the Birmingham Highway. Actually, I got a lot of interest on the commercial, there's two commercial parcels, office and retail, and we're meeting with the applicant tomorrow to start to develop the architectural character of, of that commercial building. So that'll be in front of this, actually, but, and the applicant is also, we're pushing him to finish up the pond and that whole amenity area. So first he did the village green, and now he's doing the, the back part. So we're working on that.
Bob, the pond will be a wet pond when it's finished?
Yeah, so the way we did it, you ready? I designed this so that it would, you'd have a smaller pond and a bigger pond, and all the rainwater that Ken was talking about would all go into the smaller pond, and, and there's no drain to the smaller pond. So what happens is the smaller pond fills up and then cascades over a bed of rocks underneath a boardwalk, so it kind of runs down into the larger pond, which will have a permanent water pool.
Bob, I just want to comment that the landscaping looks great.
Okay.
So thank you for shaking that loose for a long time, that it's been.
It's been sitting there.
So thank you, it looks great.
And I'm hoping the pond will look just as good or better. Okay, so this one is.
Bob, one more question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure, I'm sorry.
I had a question from a member of the community recently about Birmingham Crossroads and the lighting plan that's there. I know that some of the lights were recently installed, and the challenge to me, lighting that is now actually approved, questioning me was actually recalling it being Shepherd Hook lighting there, not the pendant lighting, or whatever you call the kind that is actually in there. Do you know whether Shepherd Hook was ever in a discussion? I don't remember.
I haven't seen that. Let me look into that and get out there and take a look at what they've installed.
Great, thank you.
I could check that tomorrow. Yeah, and if it, if it's not correct, we'll have them fix it. Yeah, I'm glad somebody. So this one is the Park of Bethany. Again, this was another one that came in front of the council, and there were some conditions back in 14. And, so I wanted to show you, the rendering is the conceptual rendering that we had developed with the, with the applicant, and now you can see some of the completed buildings on the, on the right side, and they're right in line with exactly what the rendering looks like. So I just wanted to show you how that's looking, and I think that development's coming out quite nice, and I wanted you to see the comparison between the rendering and the physical structures as they get built, and you can see these renderings are getting so well done that it really does give you a good reflection of what's, what's going to be there. Okay. This one here is downtown, right here in our Crab Apple Market area, and the, the center picture is a, is a rendering of, of how that was going to look, and now you can start to see some of the development occurring. And again, all the buildings are, are pretty much mirroring exactly what the renderings were. So we spent quite a bit of time looking at these renderings, going through the DRV process, really working with the applicant to get everything down, the style of brick, windows, I mean, we've really gone into this, plazas, how things are going to really look and feel after this is all built. And you can see it's all getting built at once, and it's really getting refined and looking almost identical to what that rendering is going to be. I really think it's going to make quite a nice downtown, so I just wanted to show you that, too. And some more pictures of that. So there's the rendering up in the upper right corner, and then the, the actual construction on the lower left. Of course, it's still in construction, it's not done yet, but you can see that it's starting to take the look and feel and shape of exactly what it looks like, so I think that's pretty good. So, and there's another one, there's the rendering on the left, the actual building's getting done on the right. They're just different views, looking one way, looking the other, but you can kind of see, we're going to end up with a really nice street wall on Crab Apple Road, yes?
Yeah, I have a question, that slide prior, and that cool sign right there?
Yes.
Is that allowed in our sign ordinance?
It's not.
Okay, so that's, I mean, that's, that looks great.
Yeah, so.
But we can't do it.
Right, so what, what, when I, when we developed this, I really sat down with the applicant, and I said, wouldn't it be really neat to put some signage up, but it's not a tenant-oriented sign, it's not the meme of the project sign, it just says Crab Apple, or downtown historic Crab Apple, something generic that we would see. And we came up with a whole bunch of options, and that being one of them, which is a roof, roof-mounted sign. And it's sort of something I think we'd like to encourage the applicant maybe to pursue some sort of variance process on, as long as they keep it, maintain it, and keep it that way, generic, that it would only be, you know, to indicate that you're in Crab Apple. It's nice to get some feedback if the council likes that, we can.
What a great government process. At least do this, but we don't allow it. We'll make you go through a whole process.
We'll make you go through a variance to get it. Well, at least they have to work hard to get it.
But, but having the, you know, a destination Crab Apple, I mean, you know, I, I hope that we can find out, find a way to do that, it's, it's a great idea.
Something that we talked about, so that, and I'm facetious on that, a little ironic, but, yeah, maybe in the future, so that things can be incorporated on that, and that, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I think it encompasses all of the idea of branding and how we're going to, you know, brand our downtown, how we're going to identify it, how do we really draw people to it? It, there is quite a bit of, of thought process that goes into that whole thing, these plazas, how we develop the plazas, how the people are going to interact with them, we're going to have little fire pits and overhead, you know, lights and things that people can really feel like they want to come downtown and gather. And, and in future staff, staff updates, I'd like to show you some other items, you know, other areas. We're doing a lot more on, in the Deerfield Corridor that's coming in now, too, and things like that, so I just thought it'd be nice to grab one or two or three, just show them at each one, see, kind of get a feel for how things are really truly developing and what they're looking like.
And again, and a lot of that, I guess, in the comments, too, about the renderings versus what's there and, and all that, we briefly discussed, but, you guys said you're trying to promote that, but, and if our code allows, and maybe we need to change it, but, yeah, some of these, what looks terrible is when trees are cut down and bearing dirt, but just like Birmingham Crossroads, for example, if people had seen a mural fence of what it's going to look like, that certainly would, would be a lot more palatable than just seeing a bunch of trees go down.
Yep. Yeah, so we actually, I did look at that, because I know you, you mentioned it the last time, and, and the code does allow us to do that, to a limited degree, you know, dictates the maximum size and all, but it does allow that, the visuals on the fencing would be considered banners. So I just have to really work with the applicants to encourage them to get something nice and actually put it up there, and this way the public can kind of see it. But it, I mean, they're so close, the way they look, I, I really think that the renderings are going to really truly depict what, what it is we're going to get at the end of the day in the built environment, which is kind of, did I lose this, sorry? So.
I'd tell you, Bob, I really applaud your efforts to bring, think back to what we have seen in the past, it was almost like doing a stick drawing.
Yeah.
Saying this is conceptually what it's going to be, where these renderings are so close. Great way to actually promote, or, or come to us with concerns, because it's so close to the finished product, I just think that's better.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll, I'll get yelled at tomorrow if I don't tell you, I almost forgot the, so in the Birmingham Crossroads, no two houses will be the same. So I did good, but, thank you.
That was the guy that was going to yell at him.
That was my group. So we, we sat with the applicant, and you know, I'm sitting there, and I'm like, look, this, these all look great, but, you know, it's such a unique corner, I just don't want to see these things get duplicated, I, you know, I want every house to be special and unique, and, and it is a special, unique corner, so.
I also applaud your effort.
We've got to agree to that, which was really good.
I also applaud your effort at Birmingham Crossroads, it appears in the interest of public safety, you may have weighed in also, where the sidewalks, as they were originally installed, had some of the posts right smack in the middle of the concrete. That concrete was then broken up and removed, and the sidewalk was repoured, where you actually walked around the pole rather than into the pole. Nice work.
All right, I'll just give you some other fun facts here, quick. We did a Rivers Alive on, volunteers went in on Saturday, November 7th. Teresa said that she totally complied with COVID, they had a much smaller group than they normally do, so they didn't get quite as much done as they normally do, but she said it was very good. They went to the city's Cooper Sandy Green Space, which she wrote is not open to the general public as of yet, so, just so people know that. But, but the, the event went very well, so I thought that was good. We're trying to keep those events going, I think they have a good impact on our, our environment. Comprehensive Plan, CPAC, we had a November 10th meeting, we have two members of the council who sit on that, on that committee. I thought the meeting went well, and we're really trying to progress and get, get, get some good feedback. We're having a, the public kickoff meeting on December 10th at 6:00 PM via Zoom, so we'd like to encourage all Milton residents to attend. They sent out a, a community survey, she wrote will also be launched in advance of the public meeting, and it will remain open at least through the end of the year. So they're doing a survey, we're trying to get more public participation, so CPAC is really moving along, and the last meeting I attended, and I think the committee's really, really focusing and in tune. We got, got a lot of talent in this city, and it's, it's really nice to see, so, just a little kick for the committee, they were, they're very talented people there. Upcoming developments.
Can I make a comment, too, on that?
Sure, I'm sorry.
On the plan? Thank you for, the two council members that are on, on the CPAC committee and all that, I know it's a lot, a lot of time and hard work, and very important, so thank you, Paul and Laura, for.
Welcome.
Sitting on there, along with, obviously, Bob and staff, and.
Yeah.
Even everybody else and all our, our other members on there.
Yeah, if I can make a comment on that, Joe. Bob, we're welcoming you to the team in your new role, and look forward to the contribution that you're going to make to CPAC, it's going to be spectacular, and you demonstrated your prowess on that time and time again. But I would also like to personally thank Steve Brokoff for the role that you've played, Steve. Think back to where we are in this process, we did put a pause on it at one point because we felt like we really hadn't, our initial launch wasn't at the standard that we had set from. set from acts in the past, and was not only a willing participant, he decided to play a leadership role in helping us to get here, and it's through his, able to position ourselves for the success that I know we have in front of us, so, thanks, Steve.
Sorry, Bob, but thanks for the comments.
Other things would be upcoming developments, I just wanted the council to be aware, the Trophy Club came in, it's a golf course, and we're working with those applicants, we'll see where it goes, but, right now, we're pushing towards large lot subdivisions for minimum four to five acres, we're hoping to get the five-acre lot sizes in there, and it's 180 acres, and we're probably looking at maybe 32 lots, so I think that will come out quite nice.
Is the club closed at this point? Still acting as a golf course?
That I don't know, I think it's closed at this point, it's still operating.
Yeah, I heard conflicting reports about it this weekend, and that's why I was asking for clearance.
Yeah.
Heard both that it was open and that it was closed.
So, when the, they informed us that the plan is to, I think, to close by first September of 2021, and to move the members over to Kirket Creek, so, you know, they would, you know, allow the current members time to transition over, so it's not that it's closed right now, or any time in the near, near future, but there is a plan for transitioning.
Great, thank you.
And I think, you know, I don't know when the right time is, but, maybe, the city purchased Milton Country Club, Green Space funds, but obviously those are limited, and I'm just talking out loud, I don't know if we'd need to do a formulation or whatever, but, you know, with what, people can't, I know some people might say, well, we don't want this, or blah, 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 right? Country Club has the right to sell the property and develop under the existing zoning rules correct, I mean, it's not something we can, as a council or staff, stop them from selling their property and developing it, so, you know, we might just have to clarify that a little bit.
Okay, wait, you want to stay up here? Because I got some, well, Robyn's here, she does all my text amendments, so we have, she can take credit for this. So we have, with the large lot subdivisions, right now, we limit them to a maximum of five lots, and honestly, when I look at it initially, back then, when it was developed, I think everybody was saying, well, let's see how it works and plays out and whatnot. But realistically, when these kind of developments come in, and I've had others, I don't want to be limited to just five lots, I think we can get many more lots, why, I mean, if they're all large lots, why limit them? So we're going to be putting in a text amendment to just make that an unlimited amount, right? Because if somebody comes in and says, I have 100 acres, and I want all five acre lots, I'd hate to not offer them the incentive, so that's a text amendment that we'll be presenting to you, and then the last text amendment will just be the verbiage for the pools in the front yards on the flag lots, right? Should that be Robyn's? All right, that's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gus, thanks, everybody. But if there's nothing else, I'll, for a motion.
移到了
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous with the exception of Councilmember Cookerly, the no vote.